Okay, so I'll call the meeting to adjourn, I mean to adjourn, I'm just wishful thinking. To order at seven o'clock.
Seconded.
Okay. Um. Where did it go? Peak. Okay, first item on the agenda is approve the previous minutes.
Move to approve as written.
Seconded.
Any discussion? So moved and seconded, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, since there's two people on the call, I'm gonna have to do roll call. Ken?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I vote aye, which makes it unanimous. Treasurers' report.
We had a inspection over at Dean Pond for their handicap access ramp of 1,022. Falls into the escrow.
Just gives us a beat the signature, I guess. Madam Chairperson, you've already been authorized to sign for the board.
Yeah, I was, because I'm not there tonight, I have kind of a nasty little virus thing going on here. I was gonna move to allow Ken Ray, the treasurer, to sign it on the board.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, so moved and seconded, Tom?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous, so Ken, you can sign it. Let's argue.
What are you signing there again? It's the voucher for which project?
At Dean Pond, there was an inspection for the handicap ramp.
We had received a letter from last meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda is planners' report. Mike, do you have anything to report?
Probably a lot, but not much. The, as you all know, 40B is going on. The next meeting for that is next Wednesday will be the last meeting to discuss traffic. This meeting will discuss stormwater and probably get into some civil engineering as well from the peer review on that. The enforcement upstairs with Pat Roach and Steve Johnson seems to be on the uptick. Just a lot of dealing with a lot of zoning issues. And so zoning violation issues. Moving into sort of grant management.
Hey, Mike, on that, did we ever pass that nuisance bylaw? There was one that was like, you know, piles of stuff was, you know, was gonna be deemed a nuisance. And I know there were some concerns about that.
You do have a nuisance bylaw on the books. See when that was.
But unfortunately, it's only on a public way. And our chief interprets public way as a town-approved street and not as a planning board releasing lots.
Right, that was, that was the piece of equipment that was left on the unfinished subdivision down on, down by the middle school. But, and that's the only bylaw we have?
That was through the nuisance bylaw.
You have nuisances, looks like that was adopted in May of 2015. That, that does, Paul, what you were saying, I mean, that governs everything from burned structures, dilapidated real estate or personal property, dangerous or unsafe structures, overgrown vegetation, dead decayed, diseased hazardous trees, vehicles and machinery, personal property which has been placed for collection as rubbish, or, you know, basically what that, what you were saying, just pile of junk. Exterior, the next one's exterior storage or accumulation of junk and storage of building materials that is, you know, left to rot. Those are the components of that bylaw.
All right, thank you very much.
And yeah, we've been busy with that one. Unfortunately.
Just a quick question, do you think the reason for that is because of increased knowledge? Or do you think there's just a lot more crap going on out there?
Um, I think part of it, honestly, I feel like we're busy just because we have more people in the office to field these calls.
Ah, okay.
You know what I mean? So it's, it's part of it's that. And I assume, you know, just because that, I can't say for sure, just because I've only been here since I've been here. But, and then a lot of it of what I'm seeing is repeat violators. So folks that maybe the town has brought action against previously and had things cleaned up, and now it's, now it's back as a problem.
Now is it dilapidated buildings that have fallen in?
It's more junk accumulation.
Is it i-sourced?
Junk accumulation, i-sourced, junk accumulation. We have an instance where somebody, you know, started working on a house and then stopped for a solid 20 years.
I'm getting to it.
Okay.
Remarkably, he has been very cooperative as of late. That particular one I'm talking about, which was not expected.
What I was concerned with was a kind of a, it's a low-level offense. It's just at the end of Warren Street, probably Kathy and Tom drive by it as frequently as I do.
I think it was my house.
No, no.
I'm like, say what?
Other than the stuff I dump in your driveway, your house is clean.
Yeah. The mattress, yeah, okay.
And then the other thing I was gonna mention, just moving into sort of grant management phase of things, you know, we were approved for the grants and now, and now it's all about grant management. So that's where we're going.
Okay. Okay, and along with grant management, we've made it clear to our friends at Safford that the grant is contingent upon them putting their share down first, correct?
Yes, I've already put that thought into their, into Mr. Roloff's head as far as having that discussion and how to proceed with that. So yeah, and I'll be looping in town attorney on that as well to construct the agreement.
Okay.
All that sort of stuff.
Okay, cool. Okay, and any other questions for the planner? Okay, just before we get into the agenda, I'm gonna try to move through this, you know, with a certain amount of, you know, expeditiously. I don't plan to cut anybody off, but to, hold on. So that said, I'm gonna turn it over to, Paul, if for some reason I can't talk, will you take over the sharing the meeting?
I don't know how to share, so I'll, I can talk about it.
Just talk into it like I am, I'm not sharing.
Okay.
Okay, I go into these coughing jags, so I won't be able to talk all the time, and it hurts. Okay, so first thing on the agenda items, Sylvan Springs, New Misco Springs request for renewed covenant. Do you want to explain what that is, Mike?
Oh yeah, so this, as much of the board is probably aware, Misco Spring, Sylvan Springs is a subdivision that is largely in Mendon, but there's a little loop of it that dips into Upton. And that has been, you know, not attended to for the past several years. But now they are starting to get up and running. They've cleared the area that is to be the street within the Upton portion of that subdivision. And so, and with knowledge of this, Concom, because they had Concom issues that they needed to address, has brought to my attention, they're not working on this in the Upton side of things. And it's their bylaw, and, you know, they don't have a covenant that is expired. So it looks like they've extended it back in 20, I forget when, but I think up to 2012 or 2015, whatever it was initially, or, and so then, yeah. So they don't have a current covenant with the town, with the board on that subdivision. So basically, an administrative.
Question for you, if I may, through the chair. We had a problem as a board, and we asked the Mendon's planning board to tell us that these people have adequate access.
Sure.
They didn't at that time. And they may not, but we should ask Mendon, who these people are getting to their houses, if they okay the access to these lots. They wouldn't be able to do that. So I wouldn't have flew the covenant until Mendon said, yes, these people can safely get to their houses. Sure. Mendon, because the road's been wide, and however they did it.
Yeah, we're gonna get that if the board's like.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's what we did before, but I don't know if we were here, Paul, if you remember doing it.
Yeah, I think, wasn't that the one where, does the access come out through, you know, like, maybe it looks like a paper road, I forget, onto Mendon Road? Is that, is that the one that comes out onto Mendon Road? And it wasn't a public way?
I thought that was another one, I thought that was something he wanted to put a lot, like a couple lots on his property.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. So this one is just where the loop, the farthest loop and deep into the subdivision comes through Upton.
And it runs right after the subdivision.
Right, but everyone was gonna be treated like they were, I mean, the emergency services are gonna be through Mendon, because that's the only way you could get there. And I forget what their address was gonna be. Were they gonna be Upton residents and going Upton schools? I forget, I forget a lot about it, Tom, because I don't think we've looked at it in 10 years.
Okay. It's on the, just over the Mendon line, it's up on Mendon Street?
No. No, it's.
See if I can find that.
That was the other one I was thinking of. I forget where this one really is. But I remember, yeah, we had them approve it through Mendon first, and we signed off on, you know, pretty limited Upton impact.
Yep. So Mendon says they're fine with the access road I am to. Because it was the getting to, the front was the South Street, I think it was South Street.
I think you're right, but I can't find the.
Yeah, I think it was passed where we went, Rich Robert. But I think the road ended at the last house in the subdivision or on that road that the subdivision road goes in, but the main road ended in Upton. Was no way to get there from Upton, and it was only a men and access.
Yeah, I think I'm conflating two different subdivision or two different projects, but I thought this one was just kind of a, it was like a C. And the C started and ended in Upton. And, but the, but it, you know, the belly of the C looped down into Upton.
I think that's the one, because I think the other one is one that we voted, I think, it was on my time on planning board. And it was, again, it was a paper road, and this fella wanted to build in Mendon and have Upton access. And, because he wanted to put some other lots in there, a lot or two lots. And we decided, you know, because it was, it had been a road and it was discontinued. And so that was the one, I think, off of South Street. This one may be off of South Street too, but this was well before my time on the.
Yeah, I think, yeah, front page, letter C, subdivision control law and Mendon planning board rules. Yes, yeah, as far as I know.
Okay.
I remember, but it says on number C here, the subdivision control law and Mendon's planning board rules and regulations govern the subdivision. So if if there's any land or any homeownership in Upton that's affected by this, we would need, it may not be this, well, we should ask Mendon's planning board if they okay with the Upton covenant regarding access to any residents.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they call it, I think they call it the Misco Springs subdivision.
I think you're right.
I'm looking at it online. 65 single-family homes.
I'll definitely confer with Mendon on it and report back to the board. But I mean, this shouldn't hold them up for anything. I mean, there's, they're doing the initial clearing and things. They're not, you know, I mean, we're entering, if it's close to January, then I'm gonna start constructing houses, I don't think. Immediately, but.
And the only, the only reason I say this, the only thing that bothers me is they're asking us for a decision. Yeah, so what does that does, then we got something we gotta do.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. So there, the road that goes into Upton, so it's actually, it's on the Northbridge Mendon-Upton line off of Northbridge Street, and there's lots, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 that are, all are partially on this Rossin Farm Drive that dips into Upton.
And at one point years ago, that was not a very good access road in Mendon, only had it for emergency vehicles. There was some problem with the access. But they hadn't built the subdivision yet. Right, when they were with us, they had not built that subdivision that they're asking us to sign the covenant off. That wasn't built, right? This is just recently built? Recently finished?
No, nothing in the Upton side is finished. And it looks like they developed the Mendon side, yeah. What I'm seeing.
Why don't we get an update and a clarification for the next meeting and take action at that meeting? For the December 9th meeting, I believe. Does that work for people?
Agreed.
Okay. These don't require motions, correct?
No.
Okay. Other planning board discussion or action items. Discussion on proposed overlay district on South Street to allow for large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installation project. Is Rick Morrell on this call, or? Is there an update, Mr. Planner?
I would defer to Tom and Ken on this one, because I think they both were able to get out to the site to visit and take a look around. Right, I did hear from Mr. Morrell that he will be getting me some updated revised either survey or map in the near future. My response to him was that that'll be the basis for, you know, constructing the overlay district, so.
Well, you watch the properties, you can go last, right? Yeah, I didn't watch the property, I'm fairly familiar with that.
Okay.
And the developments in the area. So it seems to be in the middle of nowhere. Seems like a good use. Using an overlay district is tough, but if it's not for density or for population, if it's an overlay for something like this, it's not, it doesn't have the impact of competing, especially when you're competing with house size, a house acreage and stuff like that. So I'm okay with the overlay and the project looks, looks okay. We have to see the engineering plan, but didn't look bad to me.
No, from this point, after watching the property, I mean, with all the leaves down, I couldn't see a house. I couldn't hear anything.
Interesting.
You know, in any direction. And I looked for it. And it backed up to the Army Corps land. You could see the boundaries back there, but, yeah, looked like a perfect area for what he needs, really. And he wanted to do with subdivision in the front, right?
Three houses?
I think he said three.
He did ask about if he put in a subdivision, it would be the back one in. I did tell him that planning boards, to my knowledge, can't landlot parcels, so he would have to put a 50-foot wide access from the subdivision to this land, which would be his access to the solar farm. And I asked him to contact all the neighbors just to make sure that everybody was informed before they get a public hearing notice.
Okay. And when, I mean, the warrant is, I think, now open on the town meeting. It closes January 26. Is, are we gonna have all the information before the, or is this gonna be a work in progress?
To the chair, I'd expect it to be a work in progress. I mean, we put a placeholder in the warrant, though.
Okay. Should we put it on the agenda for the January 9th meeting?
I would, yeah. Just like, you know, post articles.
Okay.
Because we're gonna get input at the public hearing, planning board public hearing, it's kind of a work in process by nature.
Okay. Okay.
No matter what we do, it could still get changed at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um. Okay. Discussion of inclusionary zoning bylaw for annual town meeting. Is there, we talked about that a little bit at the last one. Is there anything further to discuss? Or do we just want to start putting it together and get feedback on it?
Grace had, through the chair, Grace had sent out some information on this. She did some legwork and some research as far as compiling. Yeah. Compiling information, bylaws from surrounding towns and things like that for the board's review and for consideration. Grace, is there anything you want to add or say about that material?
No, not particularly, just the main themes that I gathered at the very end.
So through the chair, if the board would like, if you're interested in pursuing an inclusionary zoning bylaw for the next town meeting, Grace and I can start putting the framework together for a bylaw. I would just ask for a little bit of direction on where you, well, I guess we don't have to hammer that out now, but maybe a little direction on where you'd like to see that exist within the current bylaw, possibly under the, what is it, the residential supplemental, supplementary residential regulations within the portion of the zoning bylaw is probably a pretty appropriate place to have it. That'd be my suggestion, but we can talk more about that later.
What about the other, what about the other towns? What else, too, the other towns that are fighting this, that are taking, are there any updates on the challenges to requiring inclusionary zoning?
Well, this is separate from, this is not MBTA zoning, this is inclusionary zoning. But we will be discussing inclusionary zoning as a portion or as a component of the MBTA zoning. So Kathy had brought this to the board's attention for potentially implementing townwide.
So just, you know, maybe putting the cart before the horses, going right to town meeting with a bylaw change. I mean, isn't this a pretty big thing, and there's different ways to do it? Is this something that we should have sort of an open public meeting about inclusionary zoning and see what the appetite is within the town for inclusionary zoning at all? Which kind? Are you talking about, you know, setting aside one out of every six, 10, 15 units? Are you, you know, are there buyouts? Are there density bonuses? You know, there's different ways to skin the cat. You know, do you do some sort of a, an info gathering meeting before we go right to, this is what the planning, you know, planning board, you know, has put forth? And it's either voted up or voted down at that point. Can't really change it.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to, I mean, we have discussed it. There are different, like, models out there. I think one of the things we were talking about is one and six. You know, I didn't know if it might be more appropriate to put it in the subdivision bylaw because we're not talking about, you know, single homes. But again, I guess we're not just talking about subdivisions either. I think we had discussed, you know, allowing people to pay instead of, you know, to basically pay the value of an affordable home into the Housing Affordable Trust in lieu of actually providing the bricks and mortar. My concern is, or not a concern, but just in general, I think there's an appetite in town for this now that may not exist in a year or two. Because I think people really understand that we do need affordable housing. I don't want to see another Cobbler's Creek or something like that go through or Governor's Landing without including affordables, because that's really adding to our deficit. And I was kind of hoping that the hearings would provide for that type of input into what people liked or didn't like. I know in general, when we had the housing production plan meetings, and there were several of them, you know, basically, no one showed. And so, and this is one of the issues we discussed. So I don't think having, you know, besides the public hearing or hearings, we would have to do this, to put this together. I don't see, you know, what the point is of pushing it off. I think, you know, we just decide what the parameters are. You know, where we want it and what we want, and go from there.
Well, I mean, I think, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head. You said that there's an appetite for it now that might not exist a year from now, which would mean that we made a mistake now that we regret a year from now. I just don't know, I mean, I'm not sold on it, so I guess I would need some convincing. So I'll, I'll hold off and give you my vote when it's time.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's too many other ways to look at this. I wouldn't jump right into this. One of the things I was talking with Mike earlier is that there is a way to match up affordable housing and not using some arbitrary figure, but actually looking at who this town would need for affordable housing for, and that's people's parents and people's kids. And there's a different range and need of housing for Upton residents that I don't think just this number and this approach of giving someone, you know, six, you get 60 credit, but you only provide 17. I mean, that just, that doesn't make any sense. If 60 people need it, why aren't you giving 60 people affordable housing?
Well, I mean, I guess for a couple of reasons, Tommy. I mean, one of them is that, you know, there are any number of reasons that we should be providing affordable housing. And I don't think it's just for the people that already live there. It's for the people that already work here. It's not just for our relatives. It's for people that work here.
You know, defining housing, what is affordable housing? It means something different for a 22-year-old out of high school, I mean, out of college, than it does for a young family or a senior. Affordable housing, affordable housing means different things to different people. So you can't approach it as a one-size-fits-all.
No, and I don't think we are. I mean, basically, when you're dealing with talking about affordable housing, I think we're talking about it how it's, how it's written. I mean, we're talking about it as a, I mean, you know, as a, as a way to comply with, you know, 40B. And then if the town decides that we want to subsidize it further, or if we decide there are other ways to do this, that we can do it during the process. This doesn't tie our hands into how the Affordable Trust wants to look at affordable housing development. This just says that if you have 100-unit thing, go, development go in, you're gonna have to provide, you know, six units of affordable housing. And, you know, we can, we can further refine that. You know, as. as you know, just say, okay, does the town wanna subsidize this so we can get lower income? The other thing that's also on this is the next bylaw change, I think, was the was the accessory dwellings, you know, which is something that's really targeted to kids and parents. If you can stomach living in the same house with them or the same property with them.
But affordable housing, this is a foot-to-your-throat approach by the state. If the town needs inclusionary affordable housing, we plan it, and we don't need the state telling us what to do. We know how to do that. We change, we look at what we have and we change what we have to to match the needs. It's it's not this way, but it it's an approach of planning to increase our apartments, our condos, our ability to provide small houses. You increase your A-zone, maybe you take a little, but there's ways to go against, go again, again, for each type of person that needs the affordable housing and the kind of zoning that we have in town. And it's not through forty Bs. It's through planning.
Tommy, I I don't understand where, it seems like there are a bunch of things coming in to play here. One is forty B is a very real hammer that the state has and is is exercising. So that's not something that's just pie in the sky. And when it comes down to the state mandating that we do an inclusionary zoning bylaw, no, that's totally separate than the MBTA communities. This just basically says that if you wanna come in and put a subdivision in with a hundred units in it, we want you to build six affordable units. And the six affordable units, you know, we can buy them down if we wanna make them super affordable. But the affordable units would be who moves there has decided by a lottery, and we get to have input into what their prices are. But I think that the first step, we're not talking about every development in town. We're talking with developments of six, you know, of, you know, of six units or more. I mean, I still remember one of my first meetings with the planning board. And Jeff Roloff said when, because they originally were supposed to provide affordables as part of that. And then they decided to lower the density so they wouldn't have to. And so I asked them nicely, and the response was, well, Cobbler's Creek didn't have to, so we don't have to. So basically, right now, no one has to do it. And I think if we're having developers come in and doing six or more units of housing, I think it's very real, it's realistic and it's not, you know.
All right, I guess, I guess, I mean, let me be clear, I mean, be clear on what I'm doing. I'm I'm I'm, we're we're getting two things mixed here. One is the state tells us what we gotta do for affordable housing. That's one thing. That's nothing, I'm not fighting that battle. That's that's something. The second thing is, what could we do as a town to provide for housing for our kids and our parents by looking at our town zoning as it is and changing the map so that we could increase houses that aren't six hundred thousand dollars, that are more in the range of what we're looking at for affordable? But it's through zoning changes and it's through looking at our town map. It's it's not through forty B.
No, I'm not talking even just about forty.
Forty B is a different challenge. Mine is a different approach to affordable housing that isn't tied to the the towns, the having to comply with forty B. It's a whole different
Yeah.
way of looking at it.
And that's what we tried to do in an eight-month process with the Towns of Housing Production Plan, was we tried to figure out what needed to be done and how to plan it. And, you know, affordable housing was just one component of that. And that came up with recommendations, and that was just done like five months ago. You know, so this is something.
I make a direct line. I would take your housing production plan, and I would break it down by who. What your housing production is for different types of people. You don't need the same house for senior you do for 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 someone else. So your housing production plan should be according to a category. And the category has to match up to the ability for the town to provide housing for that category, whether it's an apartment, whether it's a detached, whatever it may be. But you you're looking at one lump sum. You're looking at affordable housing as just one lump thing instead of breaking it down by who are these people? Who are these applicants? What do they need? And what's the best situation and option to provide for?
But I think that's what the Housing Production Plan does, is it says, you know, that these are the people that we're looking that, you know, this is the type of housing that we wanna build in Upton. And, you know, we're not gonna be able to say that my kid or your kid or someone else's kid can have this housing. We're gonna say, well, we should zone this area for apartments. We should zone this area for small houses, which is one of the things that the Housing Production Plan talks about. It does talk about this stuff, but even that doesn't make it affordable.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that the inclusionary zoning makes anything affordable either, because what happens in a lot of the cases is the developer just passes on the cost, the increased cost to the other homes. Those other homes become more expensive. You've raised the price. You've raised the bar. And, you know, if you talk to developers, they'll do these affordable housing developments. They'll even do it with the percentage set-asides that you're talking about. But they need to have scale. They need to have a big development like the Lobosir development, like the Mechanic and Fowler proposal. That's the only way that they can do it. You know, I I know developers that will come in and they will build those those developments anytime you want, as long as they get the scale that and the density that they're asking for. So if you want affordable housing in Upton, you need to allow something like what was proposed at Mechanic and Fowler. And I
I don't think.
If you're proposing, if you're proposing something else, it's just not, I don't think it's gonna get the goal. So I think you actually exacerbate the problem over.
Well, I think, I mean, Mike did speak with a developer. And they said, I guess a lot of towns are doing inclusionary zoning now. And he said that one in six was reasonable, and he was enthusiastic about it. He said, you go more than that, you're gonna be driving up the cost of the rest. But I think they figured, you know, that that is reasonable. And I think we're talking about two things, and I do this all the time. We're talking, oh, you can't see me on the thing, but we're talking about air quotes affordable and real affordable. And I think that this town needs both of them. But, you know, it's it's just, you know, I am just really reluctant to allow big developers to come in and continue building the deficit. And you know, as well as I do, that if there's nothing that says that Stafford has to put six units for every hundred he puts in, that he won't. Because they haven't. And so when that development goes online, our deficit is gonna grow by six. When Cobbler's Creek goes online, our deficit is gonna grow by what, five? You know, I mean, our deficit is growing because of the number of subdivisions we're approving in this town.
But again, you can cut down on that deficit with a different type of housing. So I I don't know that.
Again, that's what the Affordable Housing Plan, of the Housing Production Plan was about, but nobody was interested.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's nice to say, and I agree with you, that, you know, it's great to have these processes, but if we don't, if people don't, and there was huge marketing for that. It's like, what type of housing do you want in your community? Where do you want it? And, you know, I think even our biggest meeting, we probably had thirty people show up. So we can keep talking about it, and if that's the will of the planning board, I'm just one vote, then we can continue talking about it. But I don't think it's ever gonna get more defined or more urgent than it is now.
Through through the chair, I did. So I spoke with Mark Mustriani, Pulte Homes. And I was gonna revisit with him in the new year, hopefully to get him to a planning board meeting to discuss this exact topic for a little insight into the the private side of of how this is dealt with and and how it's viewed. Paul, to your point of of having some, a little bit more information in front of you.
That's a great idea.
But to emphasize the to emphasize one of Kathy's point, I mean, inclusionary zoning gathers, there's great arguments on their side on 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 this particular, you know, there's definitely concern, Paul, like to to your point of is it just, are we increasing costs to then pass cost off into the market rate, and then we're artificially inflating market rate? So that's a conversation that can then definitely happen with Mark, if he's able to join us with the insight into that. And and what potentially the planning board could do as a part of a bylaw to, in order to offset that concern. So like I said, and 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 what I saw in some of the materials that Grace produced is that at least one of the communities, if not a few of them, where you're providing it for a density bonus of, you know, if you're providing an affordable home, then you get another house lot out of that. So it's something that keeps the ratio slightly in check, but then also offsets those costs. So it's not, you know, really jacking up the price on the market rates and things like that. So we can have that discussion and ask those questions as far as that's a that's a realistic thing to provide that has a desired impact and on that that sort of thing. So, yeah, valid concern on that. The, and and again, the the real, it's Tom's point, I mean, yeah, that's 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 exactly you, within the wheelhouse of the the planning board is to to identify those things and adequately plan for those things. Look at your zoning and decide who are we zoning for, right? And that that information can be, as I was talking to Tom just before the the meeting, that his his comments coupled with the Housing Production Plan as presented, can I, I think, make for it, you know, powerful, another powerful document of some kind, whether or not it's in the form of a new zoning bylaw or or zoning bylaw change.
Through the chip, years ago, we were sensitive to the kids in our school system. Schools were getting too big. We had to build a new one. We ended up building a twenty-five million dollar school here and a twenty million dollar school there. So the planning board got very sensitive to single-family zoning. And senior housing became very attractive and and things like over fifty-five is very, very attractive type, large lots, two-acre lots. There. So I don't know if we're, I don't know, that's the same approach we need to take now, because I don't think the schools are the issue. I think growing, but growing controlled, growing in a controlled manner is what we should be looking at. And that may be increasing our, decreasing the size of our house lots to accommodate for increased housing, which is something we've never really looked at. Increase, getting more houses in town was not something we've ever looked at.
Sure, yeah. And then to the to the chair, and that, yeah, that's that's a wonderful conversation to have. This particular item that we're discussing, the inclusionary zoning, this is a specific tool in the way that Kathy, you were discussing it, whereas it's specifically designed to address MGL forty B, right, and and to to keep the town in lockstep with that requirement as to avoid future comprehensive permits, forty Bs being filed with the town, that the town might not look very favorably upon if you were to have a choice. And it's 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 one, it's one aspect. It's, you know, it's one tool and toolbox of to help address that concern mostly. I mean, because really what it what it ends up providing is, again, back to Paul's point, in larger developments, yeah, they can provide that, and they're willing to provide that, and then get you the ten percent in a hundred-plus unit subdivision or fifty-five plus, whatever it is. But but realistically, on the on the other end of that scale, when you're getting a ten-unit subdivision, I I my guess is that you're more likely to see the payment in lieu of fee kick in, and they're they're less likely to provide the the actual unit. But then that payment in lieu of goes to to the Affordable Housing Trust for the Affordable Housing Trust to exercise its powers in trying to obtain affordable housing in town.
And how successful is that money going to them? How does that get us closer to ten percent one of the time?
Well, the Affordable Housing Trust is investigating.
Where do they find places to put people in? That's a tough.
I mean, what we're trying to investigate, Tom, was we're trying to investigate the most cost-efficient ways to get as many units as we can, whether it's taking town on property and putting, you know, we've talked about, all this is in the Housing Production Plan. We've talked about doing tiny houses. We've talked about doing multi-generational, like, you know, small houses. We've talked about doing apartment buildings. But it's like you have, if you have a developer come in and say, hey, we'll give you the land, like, because some of this is town-owned land, and we'll give you two hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars. This is what we want you to do. There'll be more of an appetite to it, to do it and to make that housing available. That's how we're talking about spending the money. It's not just to make ourselves rich. It's so we can come up with, so we can strategically use the resources we have to maximize the amount of affordable housing we can build in town.
I don't like the boot-to-the-throat approach that the state uses for towns. We have our own budgets. We have our own people to worry about, our own roads, our own schools. And they're telling us how we gotta zone, how we gotta do this, and how we gotta have many people, we gotta have an acre. They should stay out of our face. Sorry. Oh, Bruce.
Next. Kathy's on mute.
Hey, Paul, can you take over for a little while?
Sure. Hang on. I just gotta switch over. I'm just gonna turn my camera off, because I'm gonna be reading a lot. Okay. So next up is discussion on bylaw change to allow for accessory dwellings for annual town meeting. So I don't know if we've, Tom, that's something that you just sort of highlighted. Oh, no, sorry, that's accessory apartments, excuse me, accessory, yeah, accessory dwellings. But I I haven't, Michael, can you can you fill in on on how this one got on the agenda?
Yeah, sure. Kathy wanted this on, so but I'll I'll just fill in for a little bit on that. Again, I mean, an extension of the the last conversation, essentially. Accessory dwelling units are an effective tool for, again, providing what what Tom was getting at earlier. So yes, accessory dwelling unit is in our current bylaw, we call it accessory apartment, often referred to as in-law apartments. The the terminology that's being used as of late is is the overarching accessory dwelling unit. So when you hear that, it's in-law accessory apartment, whatever the the locality calls refers to it as. Yes. So, yeah, so currently, thank you, the the zoning board for Upton governs, who governs. If you wanna put in an accessory apartment in town, it requires a special permit approval through the zoning board. The zoning board has, to my knowledge, not ever denied one of those requests. The the only ones that they have denied are ones that didn't fall within the parameters described within the bylaw. So there you have a one thousand square foot maximum to be dedicated to any new accessory apartment. Yeah, they got, I think they got one that was in eleven hundred square feet or something, and they said, well, we can't even approve this because it doesn't fall within our bylaws. So I believe that was denied, and then they just reapplied with something that actually conformed to the bylaws, and then it was approved. So I know from from the zoning board's perspective, and now every case is different. I can't, I can't say that they will always and forever approve every accessory apartment that comes for them. But the record has shown is that they they will approve things that conform to the the bylaw. So they, and I've and I've approached them with this question specifically. They are in support of creating some sort of by right option for accessory dwelling units or accessory apartments, whatever we wanna call them here in town. The the only thing, the only hiccup, I think, really in this, and we discussed it briefly at Affordable Housing Trust an hour ago, which was the the administration. The, the administration. Kind of put us, everyone on notices as to, uh, expressing interest in creating some sort of legislation around accessory dwelling units. So you, we, the, 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 the town could proceed with a new bylaw. Um, for accessory dwelling units, if you wanted to make, make a, some form of it by rights. Uh, meaning not requiring a special permit, just requiring a building permit. Um, or do you want to hold off and see if the, the state does anything with, with it?
Personal, I may, personal, this is what we want to be yours. This is where you can help a bunch of people or I know a few people that would really benefit from having an in law apartment. Being detached from, from the kids. And that's, it's a great idea. It's, it's a property more valuable. I think the tax, we give more tax dollars on that property. And it's, and it's a great way to provide affordable housing for a certain segment, for a category of that. The same approach, this is the perfect approach. Uh, my only questions are the permit granting process. Is there going to be any form, A, is it, there's no lot line changes, so it doesn't really need to be a form A? The deed changes, of course, it does need a zoning, uh, building permit.
Yep.
So even if it was by right, they still have to get a building permit, which would check your setbacks, which would check your. All of the dimensions.
Unless for some reason you created a bylaw that changed setbacks for accessory dwelling units, which I can't imagine you do. That would all, this, so tomorrow, if you change, if, if the bylaw were to change and, and accessory dwelling units. As that they are defined now or by right, it would have to follow every other parameter within the zoning bylaw. Specifically, the, the dimensional requirements, like what you're talking about.
I like it.
So who checks that? The building inspector?
Yep.
To make sure, yes, the parameters.
So what's the downside? I, I don't really see it. I mean, I guess, you know, are you gonna add parking? Most people have, I mean, it's up to most. Outside of the center of town, most people have pretty significant sufficient parking or could pave over a spot. What, what, what's the problem with an accessory apartment?
I think there's some ambiguity. Um. I think in Upton, um, they're called in law apartments. Um, and it has to be a family member. So it's not like affordable housing. I mean, it isn't considered affordable housing. It's not deed restricted. But it also seems what happens once the. Like if you have your kids move in and they get their own place. You have this apartment that you can't use. And I think people had genuine concerns about what does that open up to? If a person has a vacant apartment there, who are they gonna rent to? What are they gonna do with it?
I was gonna do it a different way. I was thinking if you have a detached, you'd have a definitely septic system. You have another line, another power line coming in. You'd have it, you'd have a whole set, second set of utilities that you may not have if it was attached.
You possibly would have that. The, as it is currently, I mean, if people get a, a, a proof for, uh, accessory apartment, we immediately. Affirm to the Board of Health to ensure that they have adequate, um, space in their, in their septic. Because that, that is typically the prohibiting factor, um, if you're not on, if you're not on sewers. The, 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 the concerns or the, the, the downside, the chair, Paul, to answer your question. I mean, I'm not going to speak to the, to, to any of the downsides, but I'll, 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 I'll speak to what I, I've been presented with in conversations with this. Folks, um, and, and my experience about this is there's always a large concern about. You know, uh, and when, when you're adding any new housing, that's the way, that's the way it's treated. So you're adding a new housing unit. Well, who goes into a new housing unit? There's concern that it's going to be increased, uh, um, your, your school aged children population. There's concern that, uh, it's gonna create a, a lack of privacy to the, the neighbors if it's going in a detached garage. There's concern about, you know, trap, you, you could fill in the, the concerns that I'm sure this board's accustomed to hearing with, with new.
As far as neighbors, they could build a garage or another building, any kind of a shed, exactly where that in law apartment was going.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just, you really wouldn't live in it, but it'd be a nice big garage that be set back properly and everything was set up.
Those, those are often the, the, the concerns that are expressed when, when this issue comes up. I'd say the. You know, but it is, it is a. From, from what I've seen from a state government's perspective, um, not particularly this one. But it is an effective tool to get at, Tom, what you, everything you were talking about earlier as it provides for. That sort of bookends, bookending of adult life, you know, um, the kids, uh, just graduating out, out of college. Not necessarily have a job lined up or, or if they do, that's, you know, it's entry, entry, uh, position wages.
Someone to plow the ground.
And someone to fund, exactly. Or, you know, where mom and dad gonna go after, you know. Not quite ready for assisted living, but we're not quite ready to, uh, leave, leave them on their own.
But is Catherine, what happens when the apartment is empty?
That's, yeah, that's, that's, uh, for the board to decide.
I think in most cases, they're not detached. In most cases, it's detached, perhaps, at this point.
I mean, it's, it's sort of everybody's default opinion, I, I, and, and. And, and my experience of. When it, when it's vacated and it's no longer occupied by a family member. You know, the, the immediate assumption is, well, it's just gonna be rented out to somebody. And, you know, it probably is. But you gotta, I think you gotta decide if that's okay or not. Uh, you know, I think you gotta go off of the assumption that that's what is going to happen regardless if somebody's, uh, in there. Who is related to the, the homeowner today, tomorrow, that could change. I don't, I don't find that to be concerning, uh, from, from my perspective, but, uh, I, I would offer that to the board to, to consider.
The person who would need, uh, how, like they moved out, they moved down to Florida for parents and. Somebody else's cousin moved in. Can't afford anywhere else.
Yeah.
Apparently in love and, you know, some point my fingers be gone. I'm hoping one of my kids moves in or I move there. They go into my side and rather than that, there's somebody else there.
And they do the drive.
Yeah. So is it, I mean, I guess, uh, would, do people have a problem if I get my. I get my apartment and the person who I say is gonna live there, lives there for six months, leaves. And, I mean, is there, do we want a restriction that only somebody that's related by blood or marriage can be in there? Or is it then just a. A very small. Second source of income for somebody. Small apartment, large source of income perhaps.
I don't know too many people that would have a tenant that they didn't really know and trust. On their own, on their, it's their property. I mean, people are kind of defensive about who they let in. I, I don't know that you'd have somebody rent to a stranger in this town.
What if I, what if I'm renting the main house to a stranger? And now I can rent the accessory apartment? I'm not sure if it's a bad thing.
It doesn't offset the, the providing housing for people who need it.
I would, I would guess the board, Paul, to your, to your point. Regardless of the familial connection, I, I would suggest to the board that you always maintain the requirement that, that it be owner occupied. At least one of the units.
Yeah, makes sense.
But, but to the, to the larger question to the board is. Is this the discussion you want to keep having? Is this something you want to try and get on?
Do we know enough to put it on the make?
Yeah, this should be an easy change, honestly, like, uh, language change to what we already have existing. You can, we can loosen that up easy. Create, uh, eliminate some of the param, parameters and, and, uh, create some new parameters based on discussion.
But you're really only eliminating one of the bureaucratic steps. Your, your, that you still have to go to the, the building inspector. You still have to comply with all of zoning. You just don't go to the three member appointed board first.
Yeah.
So that you can go and see if you could build it.
Yeah. I mean, we can, and we can also discuss, discuss, discuss options, uh, regarding. You know, do you want to make it by right if it's within the home, but then special permit if it's detached?
It used to be. Never used to be a ZBA permit until a few years ago.
Okay.
That's a, just before you got here, I think was always a, a by right, you could always build a building permit.
Yeah.
But you didn't have to get a, a zoning board of appeals permit up until a few years ago.
Okay.
Well, I, I had to get it eight years ago.
Was it eight?
Actually, no, it was five years ago.
Yeah. I guess so. All right, we'll work on that. If, if everybody's on, uh, with.
All right. Sounds good. We're walking through the bylaws. So discussion on WRTA bylaw for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, and I'll pick up on this again. This, uh, this, this was sourced out of the Economic Development Committee. And really that, um, that should, uh, WRTA bylaws intended to mean a, a bus stop bylaw. It was, uh, so I'm having conversations with the WRTA and I'm also looping in CMR PC. As far as what it would take for up to become a WRTA community with any kind of bus service. Uh, and that, again, that conversation is sourced from the, the Economic Development Committee. And so, uh, the question was posed to me. If we want to allow for bus stops in town, say, like, say we do get WRTA sometime down the line, uh, here to Upton. Is there anything preventing us from putting in bus stops? And, and I made the comment of some towns will. Explicitly allow for bus stops within their zoning regulations, uh, the zoning table. Um, and typically it's something like, uh, school, you know, some sort of, uh, uh, school bus shelter. At the end of a very long driveway, uh, for children, you know, waiting out in, in the February snow, um, for, for the bus, but, um. I, I, I just, I, what my suggestion to them was, if it's a concern, you know, why not provide for it? If it's, if it's, uh, what, what your intent is to have, uh, later. That was, that was basically it.
I guess I, I don't understand exactly what they're looking for. So if the Worcester Regional Transit Authority. Decides to extend bus service. Through Milbury and Grafton and then into Upton.
Yep.
We would want to be ready for, to welcome them with open arms with the ability to put bus stops where they need it.
Yeah. So, so, uh, basically it would be a simple, um. A- as far as language change for the bylaw, it would be as simple as adding a category for bus stops within the, the use schedule and saying that they're by right.
Is there any indication that the WRTA is thinking about coming to Upton?
Uh, not outside of, uh, my reaching out on behalf of the EDC, no.
Okay.
Just to interject for a second, um, I raised this, um. I think with Mike and Joe, when Joe first started or when they both first started. Because I was so frustrated, um, it was totally personal. I was very frustrated, um, with. You know, I have to go to Boston once in a while. And unless you get to a train really early in the morning. You can't get a train because there's no parking spaces. And so I guess, you know, because I tend to go in for, you know. I used to go in a couple of times a week to meet with legislators and stuff like that. So I couldn't figure out why they didn't have a shuttle, um, to the train station, especially seeing we're an MBTA community. And it's because we don't pay for it. And I was also thinking that that would probably. Be a boon as far as economic development goes, um, because if you have a place that people go at downtown. Then you might get coffee shops and stuff like that. So. You know, I mean, that, that was my interest in it because if they did, if the town did decide to move forward with that. Then, you know, it'd be nice to have something in place so they could. But I didn't, I wasn't part of the conversations that Mike's had recently. So, but that was, that was where I was coming from on it.
I'm, I'm just thinking, wouldn't it be better to just figure out where that bus stop should go and, and. Site it there, you know, zone it, site it. I mean, I'm thinking it would be in the town, like by the old Holy Angels Church and the new municipal center. Where else would we have people parking to commute into wherever, Worcester or Boston?
I'll, I'll suggest to the board on this one that I'll, I'll do some more research on to how this is handled. Uh, before committing to anything, but I wanted to, I wanted to bring this up as a, as a topic nonetheless.
Okay.
So I'll work with the EDC more on that one and, and bring something a little bit more, uh, formal to the board later.
All right. And then next one is discussion on Fowler and Mechanic Street parking. There's a question as to whether a new parking lot for a trail is considered a change in use requiring site plan review. And I thought that an increase in parking would be one of those things that. My, that was just my memory. I haven't looked at the, I, I started looking at the bylaws and ran out of time, but isn't, isn't an increase of. Parking of more than X number of spaces that is a site plan.
And, and, 10 spaces requires, uh, is major, is major change.
It is. I just wanted to confirm that with the board before giving, um. Forget if it's dot com or, uh.
It'll be the only space I think is.
Yeah. Lancership, excuse me.
Uh, yeah. Ten spaces, uh, requires a major.
Okay. Oh, yeah, just one, again, I just wanted to confirm that with the board formally, uh, before giving them the go ahead, so. Do what they need to do over there, you got a parking lot. And Kathy, uh, through the chair, Marcella, um, has her hand up.
Marcella, uh, Kathy might not be able to recognize you, but I, I think that's my goal. So, Marcella, you're up.
Great. Um, just to give you a little bit more of a description about what's going on with the proposed parking area. Uh, we're looking at no more than eight spaces. And, uh, it might be fewer than that. And, um, that is the parking lot of, that we're proposing off of Mechanic Street. There will also be a little parking area off of Fowler, which is, uh, planned to accommodate two cars. So would that be considered a total of 10 if we go with. Uh, if we combine the two or how does the.
Get 10 technically. If you're adding 10 new spots, it would be a, a, a major change. That's, that's the trigger's 10.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be, but it, it's site plan review. It's, it's not the most. Rigorous process that we oversee. So we'd be looking, but, you know, we, we, we do have some requirements, right? You're gonna want to make sure you have appropriate access and egress. So we want to make sure that the sight lines are good. We want to make sure that it's, you know, that you've got appropriate numbers of handicap accessible. Spots and, and that also means the materials, right? You can't necessarily.
You need to get accessible spots for a hiking trail.
Uh, anything over eight spaces, I believe you need handicapped, um, accessible.
I thought it was 10.
I'll put 25, the, uh, 24, right? The 25th, 192 with a bus.
I'll, I'll double check, Marcella. Um, I, I, I just look up what, um, the. Architect, uh, architectural access board has, uh, but it's a, it's a table that they have that tells us that.
Okay.
Um, but back, so, so, Paul, through, through you, um, her, her, uh, the question was. It's a total of 10 spaces. Marcel, was it all in the, are the 10 spaces all in the same property or are they on different properties?
You know, I have to look at the map. They may be on separate parcels.
Here, it's eight here.
Once complete, okay, I said.
Just elaborate. I, I think there were two separate parcels. I don't know if they were combined when the purchase took place. But back in the day, we were looking at them. There was a, a separate parcel that abutted on Fowler Street. And that was separate than the bigger parcel that really fronted on Mechanic Street.
That'd be two separate filings. If it's the same parcel, it would be. If it's the same parcel, it would be the same uh, that it's ten, it's be you're adding ten to the parcel. If they're two separate parcels, you'd add two to one and eight to the other, it'd be two separate filings with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe.
Okay.
You you might be best off just treating it as one parking lot on two separate spot, I I don't know, I don't think, I guess, you might wanna just bring us in a a a crude drawing before you spend any money and give, you know, let us take a look at it.
We'll be looking at a uh, at a possible uh, configuration of the parking areas tomorrow night at the Conservation Commission meeting, so um, we'll be talking about this.
And they're gonna know that there's gonna be parking.
Okay, so uh, so yeah, Marcel, sounds like through the from the board that uh, there's uh, they're leaning towards site plan filing.
Okay.
Yeah, and Tom Tom's right, you know, you wouldn't, you might not think that a trailhead would engender a lot of neighborhood interest, but we certainly saw that on North Street or Eames Lane, whichever, uh, the the new, the new subdivision and and trailhead. The neighbors were very interested in how that was gonna be built.
And this is the, this is the good idea and it probably should get put in, so I, we don't wanna take any chances, so we'd wanna do it. Um, that way, the more methodical way to make sure it gets done right.
Yeah, I I'm a big proponent of making sure, you know, if you have this wonderful open space, it, you know, parking areas make it more usable, so. All right. Yeah. Thanks, Marcelo. Uh, discussion on one oh one Warren Street, this is the existing cell tower. Uh, and they are looking to add a ground mounted satellite dish to the tower. Uh, Mike and Grace circulated uh, drawings of that. And Mike, I don't know if you can put it, put the plans up. And and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the um, we've got a cell tower by law. Um, the feds have put in, uh, you know, within the last five or s- eight years, put in a a new twist on that, that. The 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 owner can do a lot within the existing envelope, like changing out equipment, switching out equipment. That we don't have a lot of say on, and I don't know, this this sounded when I, I I haven't been able to look at the pictures, I was looking at them on my phone, it was just too small uh, for me. Um, and it looked like this was maybe just swapping one technology for another, one set of equipment for another, which.
Yeah, Paul, um, that's, uh, I I, I don't think they're swapping anything, I think they're just adding. Uh, so they're they're adding a new dish um, to their setup out there.
On the ground and not on the top.
And it's going on the grounds, it's which will be on a structure that is attached to the tower. Um, so the question really, or the way that I I thought the question was to the board was, per your zoning bylaw. Do you, does that require a special permit through this board?
Oh.
Uh, so I was trying to identify the part of the bylaw just a minute um, to to um, cite why it's a question.
So I think if, I mean, I I, I thought it was gonna be an easier question, this is a little bit more more difficult, you know, if they were swapping something at the fifty foot mark. And it was gonna be, it wasn't gonna really change the envelope, I don't think that that would, I don't think we had much to say about that. I I think they still have to, you know, get, they have to file with us, but there's not much leeway we have. But if you're saying that they're gonna put it next to, so it's outside of the envelope. Uh, but still within the same chain link fence, I guess, that they've got up there?
Yeah, I believe so.
Oh, yeah, I, I, maybe I can, I'm gonna try and pull up the pictures of it.
Uh, while we're on the topic of of the cell tower, uh, one question that I have on four G coverage or current coverage is, we have a limit on the height, that was it a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty feet or something?
One ten maybe?
Is it one ten? No, my my question is if 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 there are parts of town that don't have coverage. Would it be wise for us to take a look at increasing the height of our towers by twenty, thirty feet? Would that cover of the rest of the town? Uh, it would, it would, um, I don't know if it's every ten feet, if they put on a new self, but not not necessarily put on new carriers, but taking the carriers that are on there and moving them up twenty feet. Would that work? Would that help the town coverage?
So in some cases, it might because it reaches farther time, but there were, there are some spots that I think, just given the topography of the land. You you know, the the, I, you know, some some neighborhood might, I think it was like up on, it it it's the cell tower that doesn't reach it. Um, because there's a hill in between and and the hill's steep enough that unless you're way, way up in the sky, you're not gonna shoot down it.
Well, my question was, do we have a uh, anything that this says that a greater height can be allowed if the planning board allows it?
And yes.
Yeah. Um.
I think we only have a little bit of leeway there, I think they can add on to that height by like ten feet.
Because because if we change the bylaw, not to say it's it's a certain height, but a a greater height can be okayed. By the planning board, you know, if it's uh, proven that that's gonna be beneficial to the town.
That's what David was pointing out, so many David Brooks, it's already in the bylaw that you cannot allow up to two hundred feet.
That was the question.
One fifty is by right and two hundred is a special.
Special.
But yeah, with this special permit, you can allow up to two hundred.
Waiver.
Through what process, waiver under the special permit.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
So I'm looking at the pictures that they sent over as an attachment. And it has a bunch of existing carriers and then they say proposed dish wireless. And it looks like it's at the lowest level, but up, it's still up. And I'm not su- I can't really see that there's additional structure at the bo- oh, okay. It it just seems like it's a new breaker in an existing shed and the shared. I mean, what, from what I can see, I'm not sure that they've expanded the, the actual. Envelope at all. Like there's an ice bridge, I I just don't know if that's new stuff, it looks like it's within the same. It looks like there's a, there's a new carrier going on at the bottom of the, you know, the, it's, it'll be the lowest carrier. Or the lowest, you know, the lowest stuff hanging on the the pole. And then on the ground, it looks like it's additional equipment within that shed area.
Now, how's it work? It receives a satellite signal and puts that through the tower? So now that the satellite signal goes out from that tower to the neighborhoods. Is that, was that what they're proposing?
Man, it it's dish, I'm I'm assuming it's like dish TV.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the service is.
But would that be the receiver and the cell tower would be the signal out?
So so Mike, are they just looking to find out whether they need to have a big filing with us or whether they?
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, the um, so the, in the bylaw, three hundred. Uh, dash six two subsection four, and this is under, I'm sorry, D applicability and exemptions under wireless data transfer facilities. So this is what, you know, what what would apply. Wireless data transfer facilities and wireless data transfer accessory buildings may be located totally within existing buildings and existing structures in all zoning districts. Subject to a special permit granted by the planning board. So I guess then the the question is. Um, i- is this considered a new wireless transfer, the others, yeah, wireless data transfer device?
But but I think the federal law changed a few years ago to say, no, it's not if it's within the same envelope, that they can, they can bolt on more equipment and I I, but they can certainly swap equipment. And and not, you know, because towns were really jacking people up and, you know, the providers up saying he had to refile, uh, because they just hated the cell tower. Um, and and I I I don't know if adding a new carrier. I I think adding a new carrier falls within that that envelope parameter. I I'm not in my office, I I think I had, I think I have something saved from K P.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, David Brooks, I can just suggesting to me, is that within that uh, that bylaw? Um, further down under section G. Each proposed construction of a new wireless data transfer facility, tower, wireless data transfer device or wireless data transfer accessory building shall require an initial special permit. This one already has an initial special permit for the tower. Uh, any extension in the height, uh, addition of addition of wireless data transfer accessory buildings or wireless data transfer devices to. Or replacement of any wireless data transfer facility shall require an amendment to a special permit, permit previously issued for that facility. So, uh, in the case where there was no sort of program. So Paul, to your point, it 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 sounds like federal regulations might interrupt, interrupt us here. But as far as the bylaws written, it sounds like, and this is what I want the the board to con- to confirm is that. Uh, by what they've proposed, even just by adding new service to that um, uh, tower, that would require at least an amendment. To their uh, initial special permit, is that everybody's understanding from what I just read?
It sounds like, but the amendment, would there then be uh, up for a permit grant? We would have to grant that permit of uh, of the the amendment?
Yeah, it's essentially a new, I mean, you're calling in an amendment to a special.
Through public hearing or just through a meeting?
Great question, I would assume it's a public hearing. Because you don't, you don't in your, in your bylaw or your regulations anywhere, I don't think you specify what an amendment to a special permit is.
Uh, um, Paul, uh, would I, I'd offer that we, we start with, they need to come in and talk to us because uh, it looks like a special meant, talk us out of it.
Yeah, I I mean, I I'm I'm thinking, I I'm I'm probably the other side of that argument, but sure, talk me into it. Yeah, I think if it's all within the envelope, and I think we can figure that out. Um, we don't have much to say about it, but I'd love to, I'd love to just in confirm that that's what they're looking at. And the law was longer ago, it was like twenty fourteen now, I'm just looking to see if I can find it. Hmm.
So Paul, I'm I'm unsure, what what are you unsure about at at this point as far as the applicability of that bylaw?
Hang on for one sec. So. And there was, it was actually a twenty, February twenty twelve. There was legislations passed that said that notwithstanding any provision of law, state or local government may not deny and shall approve. Any eligible facilities request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. Uh, and that means co-location of new transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment or replacement of transmission equipment. Uh, so I I I guess we can still have him in, I'm just thinking that. That that legislation and the rules and regs implementing it. Um, say that we don't have as much say about just modifying an existing tower.
So it sounds like it, to me, this sounds like a town council question to confirm that whether or not they should just be issued a building permit.
Yeah, I I think we've had him come in because we've had a lot of changes um, over the years and including since that that by, that change was made at Fed on. Uh, um, to federal law with the tower, small tower that that looks at the Mass Pike um, off of North Street. It's on the, on the, uh, what is that, on the Westboro side of the of the Mass Pike. One of the last lots in Upton on North Street. And they've come in and and they've they've changed equipment, you know, as as technology changes. And on that one, I think, I don't know what we've done, Tommy, I don't know if you remember what, how we handled those, I think they came in with an application and we, well, there wasn't much we did with it. We just looked at it, made sure it was within the envelope and said, yep, that 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 complies with this new federal law.
I think we've got a town council opinion, just like what Mike said now, and then a building permit, and I don't remember anything else that we got.
Yeah.
And we had, we had to have act, we had to get, we had to make sure we had access for our emergency vehicles because uh, even if someone's not supposed to be, I mean, maybe no one's supposed to be in there, but if somebody does go in there, we need to be able to get them out. So we had to, we had to know the access of the gating, and that was about it.
Yep, I think that's right, so maybe you just check with town council that.
Yeah.
My memory and my read is correct and that something like this doesn't have to uh, do more than what Tom just said.
And Pat always or frequently sends them to us if they go to him directly, he will, he will send them to the planning board for our opinion before, so we might as well come to us first. And then when they're done with us, they just go on to the building permit process.
Okay.
All right, so yeah, I'll I'll reach out to town council and confirm whether or not they should proceed uh, with this board or just get uh, approved for their building permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what we'd say to them.
Yeah.
I'm just making notes here, guys, hang on. Okay, I'll catch back up. Every time I look at something, I lose where I was. Just bear with me for one sec, all right, I'm back. Uh, discussion on the use of C M R P C credit hours. We have been the keeper of the C M R P C credit hours because we're the ones that pay their bill every year. Um, some years we use them all ourselves, some years we uh, dish them all out to other boards and committees that are doing good work. Sometimes we split them, there was some uh, discussion as to whether those hours, whether we had any, and if so, whether there were requests uh, to use what we have. For the remainder of this year ending June thirty. And Mike, you were gonna check and see what we had for hours, and then I don't know if we have had any formal requests, but we've had some informal discussions.
Yeah, so you had, you have twelve credit hours currently, um, there has been a request from the Affordable Housing Trust to use those hours. Uh, up through the remainder of this fiscal year. Um, and the reason would be to engage C M R P C's new uh, regional housing coordinator who they just met with. Um, to assist them and uh, the the professional expertise needed in order to. Um, you know, uh, obtain the the goals and and actions that the that trust wants to pursue. Um, so we utilize professional to assist them with really anything and everything is when it when it pertains to affordable housing. So helping them understand uh, certain tools at their disposal, uh, helping identify projects, uh, those sorts of things to just help them get up and running. It's a, it's a, it's a brand new trust, um, that is, that's just come together this year, so um, they're requesting to to use those hours. uh, for, for the regional housing coordinator at, at CMR PC.
Want that as a motion, Chairman?
Uh, yeah, I would move that, uh, that I'll move it. Tom, you can second if you so, uh, if you're so inclined. I would, uh, move that we, uh, vote to, uh, allow the Affordable Housing Trust to utilize, uh, up to the full allotment of 12 hours of the board CMR PC, the town CMR PC hours, uh, to pursue the Affordable Housing Trust's mandate.
Second.
Pretty broad.
Tom seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion. Uh, all in favor? I will vote aye. Tom?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And Kathy?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Kathy, go forth and do well. All right, hang on. Let me just catch up, guys. Uh, discussion on the proposed bylaw change to the town's bylaw, uh, regarding the wireless data transfers facilities that we just talked about a moment ago. Uh, Larry Woden, Ms. Woden, are you here?
I am.
All right. Uh, you've sent us some materials, but why don't you tell us what, uh, what you are looking to do? Oh, I'm sorry. I logged back in. There you are. I'm going to turn my camera back on. So I'm on too. Nice to see you again. Can you tell us what you're looking to do and what you're looking for from the planning board?
Okay. Um, last year came before you to talk about updating the wireless bylaw. As you said recently, it was, um, created in 2012. There have been some changes. But the kind of technology that is looking to be installed soon wasn't created then. It didn't exist. And the, uh, bylaw that I know you were involved with the writing of Paul was for large cell towers that were usually on private property at a great distance from where people lived. But the new construction that they talk about is small cell antennas. And because it's using a very small part of the spectrum and the signals are so weak, there's a very dense infrastructure. So instead of the cell tower mile away in the long slow wave, they talk about putting the small cell antennas every two to 500 feet, which puts them right outside of our homes and outside of our schools and our playgrounds and daycare centers and senior housing. And, um, there has been no testing of, well, there's been a lot of science that shows harm. There's a lot of, um, information and testimony that shows harm. The standards that are being created that, um, we are supposed to base our bylaws on, put out by the FCC are from 1997. When we're using floppy disks, never mind, 4G didn't even exist at the time. And now we're trying to go to something that puts it in very close proximity to people's homes. And so that's the problem. It's the toxin that comes from the radiation and it's getting to be more and more every day. People are being, um, harmed by it.
But, but, but just so you know, we're governed by federal law and, and the federal law that you don't agree with, I get that. It says that this board can't make decisions as, you know, based on some of the health decisions that, uh, at the health concerns that you're talking about.
But we can talk about safety and we can talk about that the FCC has been sued twice because they have been found wanting in the, um, in the, uh, that, uh, by, that, uh, standards haven't been updated and they have lost.
But I'm just, but, but just so you know, we, we're still bound by the law that is on the books. Even though people don't like it, even though it's been challenged, until it has been successfully challenged, we, we can't get into some of what you want to get into. It doesn't mean you can't go forward with a bylaw change. It just means that I wouldn't focus on the health, at least with me, I wouldn't focus on the health concerns.
Right. Um, well, I, I think we talk about proximity and we talk about them being on, on. So they're going to be on telephone poles that were between 200 and 500 feet apart. Now we notice all over the place, telephone poles are about 50 or 60 feet apart. So there is an aesthetic issue, which they do allow for actually. They don't seem to care about health, but they do care about aesthetics. So there is that. Also in the, in the meetings I was at in the spring, leading up to town meeting, we did talk about the ways that the FCC, the way the law can be there. We do have some rights about location and there are some things that we can do. And I think that everything we're asking to fits within that. So we went to, we weren't able to come up with a bylaw in time for town meeting. And so we put in an emergency kind of thing to get a pause on installations, as you know. And at town meeting, we did not get two thirds for the bylaw change, but we did get a, a clear majority of people who were concerned about this. So we do have at least 75, 80 people who came to that meeting who are very concerned about it. So I felt it was very important to go back and look at the bylaw again. So what I know that you can come back to the same bylaw that you tried to change at town meeting. So that was a completely different thing I've been looking for now. So in looking over and talking with Mike and talking with Joe, it was, um, suggested to me that the very best thing that we could probably do is find a bylaw that works well already that exists. And I found one that we liked and that was in Ithaca, New York and brought it, um, to Mike and we started trying to see how we could put it into the bylaw that we have already, how we could take some parts of it and put it in there. And that Mike can speak more about why that didn't seem to work. I don't know if you want.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I'll just jump in real quick, um, and just say, uh, well, so Lori brought the Ithaca bylaw to me. Um, and I didn't do anything with it other than to just put it in a format that could be potentially incorporated into the, um, uh, Upton zoning bylaws. So that, that include, that includes just going through, you know, removing every mention of Ithaca and New York and state of New York, attorney general, you know, all those things. Yeah. And, and, and you made, made them specific to Upton and specific to Massachusetts and, you know, where they made, made mention of, uh, the New York Environmental Protection Department or Office, you know, I, I, you know, put in MIPA instead, those sorts of things. So that was all I, uh, assisted Lori with. Um, and I believe I made a couple of substantial deletions as far as text, uh, because they just didn't pertain to Massachusetts or didn't fit otherwise. But, but as far as, I didn't touch anything as far as uh, intent of the, of this proposed bylaw or anything like that, because, but, because I wouldn't. So you know, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have the knowledge or, or expertise in order to, to make those sorts of changes. So yeah, it's just a formatting thing.
So what we liked about that bylaw is it gave some setbacks away from residences and schools and things like that. It had guidelines around that some companies should insure us against harm if there is some harm. There were actually, I have a, um, a list of the things that are in this bylaw that we felt it was important to include. So, um, in the FCC law, it's, we're supposed to be able to have installations, uh, that give, give us wireless service with at least intrusive means. And, um, also there is requirement that significant gaps in service would be, um, necessary. So if, if a telephone company wanted to come in and wanted to put them all over town, well, we don't need it. It's very lucrative for them, but it may not be the best thing for us. It would not be good for property values if it didn't look good. It would not be good for aesthetics if it didn't look good and it may not be good for safety. There's.
I'm just, just on one, one thing though, on the, on the gaps in service, aren't, aren't they going to have a gap in service? No, you know, period, because it doesn't exist right now. So whoever comes in the fir- first, that's, that's a hurdle that they get over, right? Because there is no 5G service.
One of the things that is in this is, um, um, let me just see if I can find it. Clarify that applicants claim that it needs the proposed tower for future capacity is not sufficient to establish that it suffers from a significant gap in service. So we have gaps in service in town. We have gaps on North Street. We have gaps in McCann's. We have gaps on Sitema Lane. We have gaps in certain parts of town. We do need some, some towers in some parts of town, but we don't need them all over town. There were most parts of town had very good service.
No, but I'm sorry, and, and you might need to just educate me because isn't this a new technology that, that this would, that these boxes, for lack of a better term, that's going to. Yeah, the, the, the small cell antennas, aren't they going to be carrying a different? I mean, well, i- isn't there a 100% lack of coverage for 5G in the town of Upton? Am I, am I missing that? Okay.
There is, but that's actually one of the things that's in this bylaw. They can't say you don't have something that's a future service and say, so we have to give it to everyone because we don't have a future service. We have to talk about a significant gap in service of what we have now and the ability to make an emergency phone call from every place in town. We have to have good enough service that you can do that. And that's really what FCC law gives us, requires.
That, that, you're saying that if I can make a, 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 a cellphone call on my existing cell network with Verizon, then Verizon doesn't need to put in 5G network?
Right, right.
But okay. And, and is there, and I, I don't know, I'm, I'm the lowest tech person you're going to talk to tonight, I'm sure. Uh, is it, are they going to say that there is benefits to me to have that 5G network because it's faster, crisper, or is it really just they want to shift to it because it's easier for them to install these things?
It's easy for them, you know, they promised us fiber a long time ago. We've been paying in our phone bills for fiber for 30 years. And then they switched it and said, well, we're not going to give you that. We're going to switch it to wireless. And fiber is better and fiber is what we want and it is what we should be getting.
Yeah, Paul, one of the things that, uh, actually bothers me is the, the explanation of how the technology and how the components of this new technology work, where 4G can cover 10,000 computers in a square mile. Uh, 5G can cover a million computers in a square mile. That leap in technology requires a leap in components. And I'd like to know what's, how does that work? How does, what, what, what are they doing to get that kind of an increase?
Well, that's what, that's the problem. That's, I don't think that's accurate information because the big cell tower covers almost all this town. And now what they're saying is you need to put a tower every 200 feet or less. So you can't say a 5G tower gives you 10 times what a 4G tower gives you. You can say 10,000.
I'm just reading the, just reading the journals that say the, the signal process type sends out this wave at this distance and it covers 10,000. And of course it's hills, it's mountains, other things that get in the way. But a typical 150 foot cell tower will cover 10,000 computers in a square mile under 4G. That's just the, the average that it covers.
That's, that's correct so far.
It's just average, but 5G increases that a hundredfold.
But a single 5G tower or 10,000?
Every hundred feet, 5G towers. Yeah.
Right. So the infrastructure is very much more.
Technology of doing that, whether it's every hundred feet or every quarter mile. What is the technology? What are the components? What are they doing? What is the signal that you're sending out? And I just want to know. It just strikes me as a leap forward in technology that I don't understand how it works.
Right. We, so I don't, I'm not sure that information has correct. But what the 5G infrastructure they're telling us they need is small cell antennas at very close together, very dense.
But you're not telling me what are the components that generate this 5G signal?
Well, it comes from satellites and it goes down to the small cell antennas and then it goes into your homes.
But, but this, the antennas are made up of capacitors. Does it resist the diode, some sort of thing? That is, is a, is a component that we know. Every other aspect of our town, we know what the components are to build a roadway, and other components are to build a house. We know what the components are to do things. And I don't know what components are here.
Diffractive antennas, which are driven from boxes. I mean, the dipo is used to shape the beam and send it in the direction of the target device and of the next, um, antenna system.
So why do you need a memory few hundred feet?
Signal's very weak. It doesn't go. Doesn't go too far.
It, it has the potential for running at high frequencies and high frequencies are more easily blocked by, um, sorry. I'm answering a question, Tom, but I think it's all. Um, easily blocked by solid structures, trees and so forth. There's also the need for 5G technologies emitted now. Part of it originally not going to high frequencies or, or cell phones. Um, but part of its promise is much higher transfer fees and most importantly, um, lower latency like millisecond round trip, round trip times. Get that from the high frequencies and the shorter Ccs which are all. But I, I, I want Lori to finish and I want her to be able to say what she says and answer questions before I'd like.
Somebody's put something about this in the meeting chat. Talking about the wavelengths.
Yeah, just quickly in the, in the comments, um, Courtney Galardi. Uh, maybe something we already discussed, the Telecom Act and how, um, not having 5G is not considered a, a gap in service, what Lori was saying earlier. Uh, and the shorter wavelength means 5G can carry a lot of data much faster than 4G, but also means a much shorter range. 4G wavelengths have a range of about 10 miles. 5G has a range of about a thousand feet, uh, not even 2% of 4G's range.
That's why they have to have so many of them.
5G does not mean in shorter wavelengths. Shorter wavelengths mean 5G, but 5G in many places operates on the.
Um, can I just interject?
Because there's so, because there are so many component aspects of 5G which don't require, which all work together and don't require these short wave lengths.
From a planning board perspective, this technology and the terminology is not in our bylaws. I'd like to get this.
That's what Lori and I want to collaborate on.
All right, that, because that's a.
Yeah. Can I just interject for a second, please? I mean, I was hoping that what we could accomplish tonight, um, was, I mean, as folks know, we spent countless hours um, discussing this less than a year ago. And it went before town meeting, um, and it did not get the two thirds majority. Um, I think what Lori has done is she's come up with a different bylaw that's substantially different than the one that was presented last year. From what I've heard from Mike and what Mike and from Lori and from what folks said about council, um, is that this one is indeed substantially different. And this one might actually be something the planning board would be willing to attempt, you know, to, um, to, you know, to hold a public hearing on. I do know that, um, David, who was one of the primary, um, opponents at that town meeting, um, expressed an interest, um, in working with Lori on this. He did not have the same objections that he had before. And so what I was hoping that we could accomplish at this meeting was not to go over again, the discussions we already had about the science, um, about, because as we said before, there's about the, you know, the law, because it's just, you know, I mean, you know, first of all, this, it doesn't look like 5G is going to be built in Upton anytime soon. Um, so, you know, but just sort of look at what is being presented to us tonight and keep the focus on that rather than going over the foundation of what was discussed before again. And from everything I've seen, that the proposal that Lori bought for was, um, you know, I mean, I, I read it. Um, it is beyond me technically. Um, so I defer to what legal counsel and, you know, Lori and the experts say on it. And, you know, if that indeed works, then I think, you know, I would, I would not oppose it and I would not oppose bringing it to public hearing. But what I was hoping we could do at the meeting tonight, when I was still capable of chairing it, was just have a discussion of why this one, you know, what the difference, you know, what, what does one accomplish? Um, and why we would, um, you know, want to move forward and hold a public hearing on it.
Well, question, question, aren't we changing from updating the bylaw to replacing the section? There's a big change. I thought that we're moving now that this was replacing the cell tower section with this new one, which is totally different.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, to Catherine's point, if, if I may through the chair, um, the proposal. if if I made through the chair, um, the proposals I wrote, I thought, into Michael some time ago, at their core are very similar to those in the ethical bylaw, because why are we so excited at the opportunity of like a big glory? They do a lot more on what I hadn't addressed yet, which is application procedures to shop clocks and so on. There are some significant differences we need to work out. Um, and they're striking differently, but that's the reason I really wanted to join it. We, Catherine, I'm sorry, Lori and I started very different places, but we're arriving at a similar place and that I hope um, will get us going. And we have then I have thirty different viewpoints from the regulations that are legal. We're in similar.
If you're competing for the same goal, we win.
Yes, yes. And I think we to cooperate and we have got to disagree on a few things. I should cooperate in the two of us after May, show up at the same town meeting with the same ideas. I think that will be a powerful risk. And that's what I said to Lori.
I think so too. One, one of the things that we liked about the ethical one is that it's already being used and approved and that sort of thing. So and it was made by an attorney who's very um well known in in telecom litigation around the country and works on a lot of them. So we felt that um trying to inject certain parts of it into ours could leave us open to suit if we didn't do it all, right? I might could really talk to you a whole lot better about that. But if you if you only do parts of it and you do and you don't do all the right parts of it, maybe we make a mistake and that we'd be better off to just replace. We really did try hard to insert different things and just like, there's not it's too much and you either had to put it all in or not.
I just sound like a double act, my version. It is based, which is actually on cast bylaws in Watertown, North Reading, if you know other places, and I think I added some stuff they forgot. Um, but again, they are very, although they all come from different places, they are very similarly structured and they come across the same ground, which is remarkable because one thing that just made me raging mad at the beginning of this and still true is that the state, federal government, CMRPC are not offering any guidance. They're not saying, here are model bylaws that you might want to consider, that meet FCC requirements, that get within most towns laws. And I think one reason is everybody's bylaws are differently structured. They all come from different places. So we can fit things that were known to work in a large college town with lots and lots of data going around and smaller towns like um North Reading. And towns that took little turn that actually run their own rules. We can take all of those and boil them down into something that will clearly work because it's worked elsewhere.
And, you know, again, just to interject real quickly, I think, as David just said. Um, and, you know, thank you very much, Lori, for bringing something back that was so substantially different and also I think addressed, you know, some of the concerns that at least I, who voted not to recommend, um, you know, would 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 sway me. What I would like to see again is to avoid, um, and this is not to bypass Tom's concerns, which are more process. Um, but um, you know, I would like to see David and Lori work together on putting this something together and then work with Mike and then bring it back to us. Does that?
It's, it sounds like that, you know, two people who've spent a lot of time on this and as David said, they started in very different places, but they're they're ending up in the same neighborhood, at least. It it it, that sounds really productive if they could possibly get this thing, uh, you know, one more turn. Um, and and then uh, if they're both in agreement, or even if they're not, if, you know, even if you said my section six, I think section six should say this, and Lori says, I think my, you know, section six is better on that. And even just give us the, you know, where you disagree or give it to Mike and and then we'd be in a better position to to, you know, I think, hold a public hearing when we've got that, you you, both of you with with full input, because you both have put a lot of time into this.
Yeah, and both of you understand it a lot, at least speaking for myself, a lot more than I do. And so I think you guys do it and that would be phenomenal.
Thank you. One of the things I wonder is because I do feel like there's some urgency about this because they, somebody suddenly was putting up a cell tower in Ashland and saying that they didn't need to do permissions or applications or anything like that. There's a lot of attempt to move very quickly on this. I think because of the lawsuits that FCC lost, I think they're trying to rush because FCC is not doing anything about the fact that they've lost these suits and they're not updating anything and um the rollout continues. So I am concerned. And when I saw the polls on Hartford Ave, I thought, what's going on even here? We don't know, you know? So I I do think there's some urgency about it and I'm hoping to ask if we could. I know the warrant's going to close in the end of January and I don't know how mu- how far I will get. But I'm hoping that we could ask maybe a placeholder on the warrant so we could hopefully have something for town.
License professionally.
I would too. You know, the um, the person who helped Ethica craft this bylaw will tell you, planning boards can call him and he will talk to you about it for free. Now, if we were going to use his bylaw, I think it would be very expensive down the line, but he will talk to planning boards for free and um, if we made substantial changes, that would be different. But I think it would be inexpensive to have him go over this with us if we were doing something that was close to this.
Yeah, I would, you know, my hope would be that you and David could craft something out and hash something out and bring it back to us. Um, I don't have an issue, um, again, that's, I'm not speaking for the board, with putting a placeholder on. Um, even if it's not urgent, um, if we can have something ready for spring, then there's nothing saying we shouldn't push it in for spring. Um, but then give us something, you know, some consensus document we can react to.
And thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, I have, uh, already have what David forwarded to me and obviously what what Lori forwarded. I can use either one of those as as a placeholder.
May I say a few words? No, I think you don't worry. Um, first of all, just technically, the text here and the text nine D doesn't isn't just six point two. Um, the the three hundred point nine or maybe chapter three fifteen are about the application procedures. The definitions are in ten point one. Um, so that that's just editorial. Um, thought I'd just make that point. However, a couple of, couple of substantial points, the discussion here, there's been a lot about cellphone coverage. This isn't about cell phones solely. It's about high speed data transfer to all sorts of new applications from smart cars to robotics to um, medicine within ambulances. That's been tried in England. Um, it's a very small pilot there. So so while the ambulance is flying down the road, it can get real time medicine response time from a doctor um, who who can hands on the patient. Um, kids running around in parks doing virtual gaming, I think they need high bandwidth and high latency, and they're not using a cellphone, they use a gaming device. But these things are merging together, but it's it's mobile application, smart cars, traffic monitors, signs, mobile applications that have nothing to do with cell phones or cellphone coverage. You need to get away from considering that. Cell phones will be the beneficiary of that. I just just want to make sure that we understand this broader than that. Um.
Can you guys come up with a presentation to give at the next planning board meeting?
I think I've. I think the one I gave two years ago would just need some sign modifications, but yeah, yeah, I can do that.
The one you need, yeah, okay. The one at town meeting was much longer than and much more, I think, technically in depth.
Yeah, the thing has a lot on, as I said, on the application procedures and so on, and that may be useful. But it also has a lot on things with other small wireless facilities, but what are they called? Um, the personal wireless service. I think this means um individual people with um repeaters, so in in the lofts to um to amplify the cell phones. If the coverage is weak on downstairs and they put a repeater upstairs, buy these things. Um, they're already exempted under our bylaws because they're inside an accessory, i- inside the dwelling. Um, six point two exemptions can close it. Um, but if that, I I don't know if there are any, um, certainly none that I've found around that can sit outside a house, but some people like to amplify this signals coming from the towers and a lot of the Ethica regulations about those, they need to be teased out because they're two quite different technologies that are jammed into the same bylaw. Um, and the other is I I, after all this time, I don't want to bring it up, but Mike, we need to discuss applicability. Because most of this equipment, if it's going to be mounted on poles, will be on the right way, not on private land. My feeling about that is if that is outside the zone of the planning board's authority and is in select um poll hearing authority, then I would like to suggest the novel approach that you adopt the regulations that the selectmen can then use by reference.
Well, that that was the strong suggestion, not not that approach, but the strong suggestion of town council was that this was more appropriately handled through the the poll sighting and and not the planning board that deals with private land for the most part.
So like is a warning of what I just said, I mentioned briefly to you, let me talk about it before. Um, I can't find any other bylaws that govern selectment poll hearing procedures. Maybe, maybe you did write those as well.
Yeah, I'll probably spread them. I'll start to show about it. Oh, yeah, exactly.
So that that's just a warning I wanted to put out that if if we're not careful, your authority will restrict you to a few five G towers on my development, which is private roads or in the beach and, no, not in beach. A private roads and perhaps a private, there won't be many of those. I'd like one, by the way, in the middle of my development, but then you have authority on that. So that's about all I have prepared to say. Um, try and find some time to work with Lori and I think there's one big discipline that we have on numbers. Otherwise, we need to pull them all in the blender and see what comes up.
You know, when we first started this, David and I were getting ready to work with Paul Delacchio before he left. And so I love to work with you, but I'm hoping that we three may become work together because Mike knows a lot about it as well and I think.
Might lose our regulations.
Yeah, so that might might be a plan, a way to go about it.
Yeah, it's it, that sounds like uh um gauging the interests of the planning board. I'm I'm sure they don't, wouldn't have an issue suggesting that I dedicate some of my time helping you out with this.
We just do.
And as I said to you, I said to you two years ago, a small rural community like Upton doesn't have huge bandwidth or latency requirements. But the problem is it's not necessary and then suddenly next day it's too late.
Exactly. And we do hope that if we can get somebody this past, then we would take it to the board selectmen and get them to talk about the regulations on polls and public rights away. There are still some things that can be done.
But if it's the only way to have smart cars and it's the only way to have technology in ten years, that we're gonna need, we got to put it in sometime.
I think the answer to that is it'll be the way. The the entire industrial base will be using these standards, whether you like it or not. And um will be better served by having access to the data as they drive along.
And we can maybe other ways to do it by that time that are.
I used to be with six G.
Six G standards are being defined right now.
All right.
Everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, there was the, through the chair, uh, in fall, uh, there was one item we skipped over in the agenda, but I'll I'll suggest that they table it till the next meeting. It was just a session about research and development bylaw for an annual town meeting, but I can I can talk about that at the next meeting, sorry.
I think that sounds like a great idea. Madam Chair, I don't know if you are still with us. I I would suggest we are done for the evening.
I haven't died yet.
All right, sounds like Monty Python. I'm not dead yet. Uh, I would move that we adjourn.
The accent in there.
All right. Oh, and if the person, if the person who was just populating the chat with some more information, if you could just, you can find my email on Town's website and just email that information to me and I'll get it to the board. Thank you, one. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Feel better, Kathy. Bye. Bye, Paul.